Su atención, por favor. Si necesita servicios de traducción para esta junta, visite nuestra sala de control de video para obtener ayuda. Gracias.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. It is now 5:03 PM, and I am calling the regular board meeting of February 21, calling it to order. So at this time, I will ask everyone to please stand for the pledges of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
At this time, I'll ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. So before we continue to item number four, I do want to make an announcement here that we are going to be withdrawing some items from the agenda at administration's request. So we will be withdrawing item six A, item seven B, and item nine B1. We will now go to item number four, recognitions.
Yes, thank you. Board President Velarde and trustees, Ms. Rodriguez, our communications officer, will commence with our student, our faculty, and our alumni recognitions.
Fall board members are going to go ahead and go to the front of the dice.
Good afternoon, Board President Velarde, board members, and Ms. Ayvedra. We have some great recognitions this evening who are a true representation of the best El Paso ISD has to offer. Our first recognition is for a group of musically talented students. These students competed with the best of the best across Texas. Beginning each fall, over 70,000 high school students across the state audition in their Texas Music Educators Association, or TMEA, region. Individuals perform selected music for a panel of judges who rank each instrument or a voice part. A select group of musicians advance to compete against musicians from other regions in their TMEA region. The highest-ranking musicians judged at the area competitions qualify to perform in one of 18 all-state ensembles sponsored by the band, orchestra, and vocal divisions. We are proud to say that El Paso ISD has the most choir students in the entire El Paso area who qualified for the TMEA all-state. This is the highest honor a music student can achieve. Seven El Paso ISD choir students are now All-Staters and will perform at the TMEA State Convention in San Antonio later this month. Please help me welcome our choir students. Dina Aldawi from Coronado High School. Lauren Allen from Franklin High School. Madeline Spataro from Coronado High School. Miguel Vazquez from Burgess High School. Sophia Spear from Coronado High School. And Zach Dummon from Coronado High School. But it doesn't stop there. I'm proud to announce that we also have five band students who have earned the title of TMEA all-state musicians. They too will perform at the state convention later this month in San Antonio. Please welcome our band students. Adam Roskoff from Coronado High School. Alondro Roywell from Urban High School. Andrew Freeman Franklin High School. Jaren Sines from Coronado High School. And lastly, Nathan Smith from Franklin High School. Can I invite teachers and directors to join us for the photo, please? Thank you, congratulations. Thank you, congratulations. EPISD Fine Arts has made El Paso history in the dance arena. For the first time since the Texas Dance Educators Association was created in 1979, a student from El Paso ISD has received an academic scholarship from this organization. Senior and all-state dancer Kalen Rojas from Andres High School edged out more than 300 of Texas all-state dancers to receive an academic scholarship. Let's congratulate Kalen Rojas with a big round of applause. Can I have teacher, director, principal join us for the photo, please? Congratulations, thank you. Thank you. Our next recognition goes to an extraordinary staff member whose dedication to El Paso ISD students have been recognized. Ms. Summer Steele from Tippin Elementary has been named the 2023 Region 19 Elementary Assistant Principal of the Year by Texas Elementary Principals and Supervisors Association, TEPSA. Each TEPSA region recognizes a school leader for outstanding service to the association and to its students. As the Elementary Assistant Principal of the Year for Region 19, Ms. Steele will be able to apply for the National Assistant Principal of the Year, a recognition program produced in partnership with the National Association Elementary School Principals. Ms. Steele was also El Paso ISD's Elementary Teacher of the Year in 2015. She began teaching her career at Park Elementary School. She stated that she became an educator so she could create a stable and welcoming home for the children in her classroom and became an administrator so that she could create the same sense of home for the entire community. Let's congratulate Summer Steele with a big round of applause. Principal or... Would her family or anyone like to join? No? Okay. Congratulations again. Our last recognition for this evening is to acknowledge the work and dedication of a proud Urban High School alumna. First Light Federal Credit Union announced that its Board of Directors named Margie Salazar as a president and chief executive officer, effective this February 1st. Ms. Salazar previously served as a chief financial officer of First Light Federal Credit Union. Ms. Salazar has worked at the credit union for 25 years, starting her career as a teller while attending college. During her career, she held several positions, overseeing various areas, including branch operations, marketing, human resources, consumer mortgage, and business lending, asset quality, e-services, and most recently, finance and risk management. Ms. Salazar, a proud alumna, attended Stanton Elementary School, McGoffin Middle School, and graduated from Urban High School in 1993, where she played in orchestra, ran track, and was a cheerleader. Both of her children are part of the El Paso ISD family. Her daughter graduated two years ago, and her son is a current student. We are very proud to have alumni excelling in the community with such wonderful accomplishments. Please help me welcome Ms. Salazar with a proud round of applause. Can I have you in the middle for a photo, please? Congratulations. Thank you, board. This concludes this month's board recognitions.
Okay, congratulations to everybody. We will now go to our next item on the agenda, which is going to be item five, public forum. Ms. Hanani, do we have speakers?
Yes. I was waiting for it to get quiet is what I was waiting for to happen. Yeah. All right. The district is a local government body charged with serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren in our district, and board meetings must be focused on meeting this charge. In meeting that charge, the district board meetings are public meetings under the Texas Open Meetings Act to conduct the business of the district. They are not, however, meetings of the public. Therefore, all persons in attendance are expected to display civility and decorum that is respect for their persons without the use of insulting, profane, threatening, or abusive language. Public comment will not be used for personal attacks. In addition, you are directed to the district's complaint procedures and board policy regarding employee, student, parent, or public complaints. The deputy superintendent of administration is in attendance if you wish to discuss a matter with him. Please note that during public forums, specific factual information or recitation of existing policy may be furnished in response to inquiries. However, the board may not deliberate or decide any subject that is not posted on its agenda. Our first public speaker is Cameron Sierra. And you will have three minutes.
Good evening, Board President Velarde, board members, and Superintendent Sayvedra. My name is Cameron Sierra, and I am the speech-language pathologist at Coach Archie Duran Elementary School and Urban High School. I spoke at the school board meeting in June of 2022, at the very end of a difficult school year, advocating for help for the SLPs amongst fears that we would continue to lose loyal and hard-working therapists, not be able to attract SLPs into the district, resulting in the remaining therapists continuing to be spread thinner and thinner. We have also lost incredible programs that helped our youngest students with speech impairments because we just don't have the staff to support those needed programs. In June, we were down nine SLPs. Now, in February, eight months later, we are down 16 SLPs and are continuing to feel the pain in ways that a lot of people don't seem to truly understand. This is a twofold recommendation. One, to value school-based SLPs appropriately and make the pay competitive to entice other SLPs to join EPISD. And two, incentivize current dedicated SLPs to stay. As you may have heard, there are 30 UTEP students in the current cohort. When they graduate, if they choose to come to EPISD, they will need to be supervised during their clinical fellowship year. I myself have supervised previous CFIs and am more than willing to continue to do so, as are many of our current SLPs in the trenches because we do care about getting new staff and training them the right way and hopefully getting them to stay for the long haul. The getting them here is half the battle. That is the current problem. The pay is a huge factor when making those decisions because, as you may or may not know, speech-language pathologists are trained and certified to work in hospitals, rehab facilities, clinics, private practices, home health, and many, many other options, not just in the school setting. This is why something has to be done to entice other SLPs from other districts to choose to come to EPISD and work here with us, as well as hopefully incentivize the current SLPs to stay. There are many of us who have truly dedicated our careers to this district. I myself am one of them, and it has become exponentially more difficult over the last few years. We've worked together to try to come up with valuable solutions to assist, but we continue to lose our most cherished SLPs and SLP assistants. Many have been saying that they just cannot keep doing this and are very close to leaving. This is why I decided to come and speak again to bring this to the forefront because I don't want to lose any other really good SLPs, and we really do need help. So please, help us. So please, help us. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sheri Ryder.
Good evening, Board President Velarde, Board members, and Superintendent Sayavedra. My name is Sheri Ryder. I'm a speech-language pathologist at Charles Q. Murphy Pre-K-8 and Carlos Rivera Elementary School. I'm back to discuss the crisis shortage of the SLPs in this district. I know that you are aware of the problem. I have come several times in the hopes that you would listen and hear what I had to say. Until recently, I felt that my pleas had fallen on deaf ears. It was brought to my attention last week that a colleague of ours and two people from HR will be attending the Texas Speech and Hearing Association Convention in Austin starting tomorrow. While I applaud the effort, the exorbitant amount of money being spent on this endeavor could have been better spent in our own backyard. We could have taken that money and offered additional sign-on bonuses to the 30 SLP graduates that will be joining the workforce in May. As I have brought to your attention before, a new SLP with a master's degree will make less than a new teacher without. We can't wait until June for action. We must do it now. There will be a UTEP job fair in March that I have volunteered to work at. I would love to be able to tell these fabulous SLPs that EPISD is offering a pay commensurate to a new teacher. I would love to tell them that we can sign them up right then and there for a position in July. I would love to tell them that EPISD takes care of all of its employees, not just a select few. If there's money to spend, send three people to a conference for recruitment, then certainly there's money to hire the UTEP students that are right here in our own backyard. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ross Moore.
Mr. Board President, Board members, Ms. Sayavedra, my name is Ross Moore, President of El Paso AFT. Last three years, starting on August 3rd, 2019, have not been good years for El Paso. That was a, that white nationalist terrorist tack started a three-year rotisserie-like cycle of stressors affecting every person in the community. The stressors, for those of you with military background, that's called PT, what we're suffering from is PTSD. And over the past three, three and a half years, you've had the pandemic with all its stressors, be it medical, societal, financial, familial, and educational. We've had lockdowns like Franklin punctuating this, and last Wednesday's shooting at the Cialavista Mall got AFT National's attention. This is a series of stressors and trauma incidents that are compounding one or another. You want to know why kids are acting out? These are standard symptoms of PTSD acting out. You want to know why my members and your employees are acting out? Same thing. Want to know why, from at least my perspective, there are some administrators that act out? Same thing. Are there parents that act out? Yes, same thing. This is affecting the community. When I got a call last Wednesday from AFT National was, "What do you need?" I waited about 24 hours, just kind of thought it through, looked for district's reaction, and I told them, "We need one thing here. We need to restart the trauma-informed training program in EPISD." I think two of you were here when we started it up last time. Did one session, I think we trained 25 people to be trainers, because the goal of this is not to keep having AFT come in, but to build a capacity in the district to train and eventually establish a cadre of trauma-informed people at every campus in the district, because that's where you need to have it. AFT, Randy Weingarten is committed to this. She committed anything El Paso needed back in 2019, reiterated this last week. State and regional have all committed to this, and my local, I'll be committing at least one officer and at least one of my staff to help make this work. The idea is to build a capacity. We've reached out to administration, and any questions you all have about it, I'll get you connected with the right people up at AFT National or State, and I actually know a couple of the answers, too. Thank you very much. This is a problem that's not going to go away. There's no magic PTSD pill. There's no two-hour talking session. It's a long program of not only being able to recognize when a student's acting out or a teacher's acting out, out of the stress, out of...
Time is up.
But when you are yourself. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Aurelio Valdez.
I'm Aurelio Valdez. I have served on the local and state and national level as an activist and a human rights leader for the LGBTQIA+ for El Paso. I rise this evening due to the failure and incompetence and blatant deliberate, excuse me, deliberate indifference of the El Paso Independent School District in violation of 20 U.S.C. 1007-1, 496, 222, and 226, Title IX, the TA Tenants and Grade Laws, as well as the Students' Federal Civil Rights and State of Texas Educators Code of Ethics violations. It's been very clear for some time that with the El Paso Gender and Sexuality Alliance Board, the organization that I founded that we work with, with General Counsel Collins, Superintendent Paz, General, excuse me, Superintendent Gonzalez, Superintendent Sheffield when they were at interim, and as well now, Superintendent Sayavedra, it's been very clear that since I founded the board, I do not want lawsuits. I do not want any kind of litigation. I don't want it to come to that. And I'm aware that I know we have the $29 million deficit in EPISD. That's something that I'm not very happy about. We shouldn't have a deficit. So I made it a very great task that instead of actually going to litigation, instead of actually going to lawsuits, that we actually tried to mediate it. And fortunately, that's something that was a skill that I fortunately was ever, when I was rising to the national level, that I was actually very good at, and that's one of the reasons why I rose so fast. And so, since I came out of the closet on March 21st, and in less than three months, already rose to the leader of the LGBTQIA+, and I was the leader of the entire South United States for LGBTQIA+ mediation was always what had worked. But there were sometimes it didn't. There were sometimes in Dallas it didn't work, sometimes in Houston it didn't work, and sometimes in Louisville it didn't work. And so when that doesn't work, we go to the ACLU, we go to the Land of Legal, go to the U.S. Department of Education, and depending on whatever state it is, we go to that Department of Education. Texas, that's TA. So, as we know, the more situations that are getting worse and worse, at this point, it's always been discrimination specifically for your EPISD. That's been majority of the time. Now we have death threats, now we have religious hate group protesters, and now just last week on Tuesday, when I was at El Paso High School, now apparently the entire administration, the entire El Paso High School is not abiding by the grading policies, is not abiding by the attendance policies. So, I'm done. I've tried mediation. We've never stepped foot in court till this day. I know we haven't. But that's it. That's, that's it. There's a time where the same things keep on happening over and over again, and even though we try to mediate it, sometimes it'll be dealt with, sometimes it won't be, and then the same things keep on happening again and again and again. And so, especially when we have silence when there are death threats, for a week and a half, that's unacceptable, and you should resign.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Jalen Moreno.
I am Jalen Moreno, the Senior of El Paso High, and I am also the Chair of El Paso Genders and Sexuality Alliance Board. I am here to use, I'm here today to use my voice and make it known that not only one, but two EPISD high schools have had two religious hate groups protest, where students were victims of hate speech and even death threats. A religious hate group death threatened students, and EPISD failed to protect student safety and mental health. How is this acceptable? For you to respond a week and a half later regarding death threats and student safety after they experienced these appalling protests, your silence is unacceptable. Enough is enough. As the leader of the LGBTQIA+ 2+ community of El Paso, this is a serious concern I do not take lightly. We are, we are taking no more. It is time to take this to a higher power if you are not going to do anything about it.
Thank you. And we actually have two more speakers. The other speaker that will be joining her is Victoria Gomez.
Good evening, Board President Velarde, Board members, and Ms. Sayavedra. My name is Victoria Gomez.
And Annette Polo.
Okay. We come to you today in hopes to bring a successful outcome for the Kinder First Grade Combo classes in our district. We first would like to start off in how this was a struggling matter, but then provide ideas on how to fix it. Our goal is that if it continues, that it continues in a successful manner. We have a positive outlook in the future of this, but we really need our district's Here is where we struggled. In September, we were thrown into the Kinder First Grade Combo with no time to prepare, but mostly with no training in how to properly provide a class with multi-age, ages and curriculums. The ages range from five to eight years old, which is really important for their game, brain, brain growth and development, sorry. When asked for compensation or stipend, we got rejected. We oversee two grade levels, different forms of grades to provide, different parent groups, and two curriculums. It didn't seem fair to have double the work with zero compensation, while others did get compensation by having been given what they asked for, when we would think all eight campuses would have the fair same treatment. We were also initially under the impression that first-grade parents were not to be notified due to the letter sent from the Superintendent's Office only being directed to the kindergarten parents. This opens the door to damage to trust that we wanted with those families. Now here are ideas on how we can begin to remedy these vital concerns. We are asking for proper training. We even sent the interest of a training from a Montessori school, being that they successfully do this. Hands-on training and seeing it done successfully could really help us provide the appropriate classrooms to the children. We are asking for a stipend and materials and additional funding from the district to help us provide the best to both grade levels. This would help us give the best materials to both grade-level students. We are asking for open communication to both grade-level parents because this is the base of trust between families and our district. Open communication is key to a successful year. This can be done in a positive manner as well. We are fortunate to have an aid and think it is crucial to continue having one in these types of classes. Therefore, we hope that in, therefore, we think that an aid should be continued and be provided in the years to come. The mission of our district is, in partnership with our families and community, we will uphold the highest standards to provide inclusive and fair learning experiences that support the whole child. Building a relationship with our families requires trust. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Hanani. Okay, so we will move on with our agenda. Item number 6A has been withdrawn. We will now move forward to Item 7A, Update on House Bill 3 Student Outcome Goals and Progress Measures. Ms. Sayavedra?
Yes, thank you, Board President Velarde and trustees. If you recall, at our last board meeting, we appoint, you appointed Board President a, an ad hoc committee to review our House Bill 3 student outcome goals. So this evening, we're going to share the work of the ad hoc committee with you and provide, and seek feedback from the board so that we can further adjust that and bring it back to the board in March for approval. So at this time, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Gonzalez, our Chief of Schools, and Dr. Jacqueline Kennedy, our Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, Board President Velarde, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Sayavedra. As mentioned, Dr. Kennedy and I are here this evening just to give you a little bit of background on our House Bill 3 student outcome goals, as well as the work done by our ad hoc committee, and really, we're here to seek your feedback and further suggestions, ideas you may have as we move to finalize our House Bill 3 student outcomes. As your presentation in, in the first part of our PowerPoint this evening, a lot of this is background information about what the House Bill 3 goals actually are, and then the three areas that we adopted back in 2020. I will go fairly quickly through this, just to give you sort of an overview. If you have questions, please just slow me down. But as I said, what we really, really want to get in front of you this evening is the ad hoc committee's, our summary and the recommendations moving forward. This is the TA requirement of all school boards to adopt in three areas, actually two, but it turns out to be three. We do need to have goals in the two main areas of early childhood literacy and mathematics, and then also in the CCMR, which is our College Career Military Readiness. We do need to be reviewing these and updating not only the board, but our community on a yearly basis. This is what our original, back in 2020, January 2020, the student outcome goals that were adopted, and the progress measures in order for us to monitor and track our, our growth and our achievement of the goals that we laid out for almost three years ago. The first area is the early childhood, and there's two sections here, that's why I refer to three. We have the student outcome goals for literacy and then for math. These were the ones that we tracked. We used 2019 as our baseline year, the data from that year, in order to track through what would be a five-year cycle. On this particular graph, it does outline, at 2020, as you know, these were adopted just a few months before the pandemic took full effect. We didn't have data that year, and as you can see in 2021, when we came back, we did see significant drops, mostly attributed to the pandemic. But in our areas of reading, you can see that we were able to gain quite a bit back and almost back on track as to where we were in terms of what our, our long-term goals had been set way back in 2020. There's two, we, we track a lot of different areas in our, in the House Bill 3 student outcomes, but two particular populations that we have to be very mindful of are our special education students and our emergent bilinguals. This graph simply illustrates again that we did see that drop with all of our overall student groups, as well as with our sped and emergent bilinguals, but a lot closer to staying on track. This is our information compared to that of our region, which is in the orange gold color, and then state, which is the gray, EPISD being the blue. You can see where we started with our baseline. Again, we saw those drops during the pandemic, the time that we were struggling through there, but then again, we are definitely on the road to recovery and working closely back to where we wanted to be, where we had estimated our growth, our hopes had been back in 2020. These are the progress measures. This is where we're breaking down a little bit more in order to be tracking throughout the year, not just waiting for the, the results at the end of the year. The progress measures set back in 2020, we're looking at our kindergarteners, first and second graders, and how they were doing on ICE Station. That was our diagnostic that we had adopted back at the origination of the goals. But you can see in 2021, we did not, we changed our diagnostic, what we were using to actually measure. So that definitely gave us some inconsistencies, unable to read where our students were during that year. We returned to ICE Station in 2022. Again, this is where we're still recovering, and then the, the gray bars are indicating we don't have the diagnostic yet, we haven't finished these years. But it does indicate where we're hoping to be. We still have quite a bit to gain from where we are currently in 2022 and where we hope to be by the end of 2023. This is simply just in order to really be able to track individual campuses, wanting to look at your particular feeder patterns, your campuses, or looking at specific groups outside of the sped and the EBs that we mentioned. These are how we can track that specifically, and that's in your packet for you to be able to view. Now math, somewhat along the same lines, again, we were hoping to have a steady growth there. In 2019 is our baseline, 2020, again, lacking data. We see the impact of the pandemic, significant impact of the pandemic. And then we did make some significant gains in 2022, and our hopes is that we will continue to make the jumps. As you can see, we had quite a significant drop to 20%, but we gained 22 points from 21 to 22. So we are optimistic that we can get back on track with the math. These again just show a little bit more detail on how our sped students did and our emergent bilinguals, very similar to the overall student populations. And then just again in relation, our district in the blue compared to the region, and then in the state. Again, 21, 22, very much of a recuperation year. Again, 21, 22, very much of a recuperation year. Now, our diagnostic, as I mentioned, we had changed diagnostic measures. We've changed them quite a bit in math. So the, the reason for the gray in that is that after 2020, we really didn't have a consistent measurement, and so we don't have the data in the same way that we had the reading. We moved from I Station to about two different diagnostics. So it's much more difficult for us to be able to measure where our kindergarteners, first and second graders were on that progress measure. These are, again, the links in order to look at individual campuses and additional subgroups in the area of math for our early, early childhood areas.
So kind of connecting that to what Carla mentioned around those areas where we were able to make some gains, but also thinking about the current year, we looked at our 21, 22 inputs, and those are just a way for you to see some of the things that were put into place so that we can start to move the needle on some of those metrics. But also, in the middle are some of the outputs that we were able to generate some data around to see some of our progress along the way, and then some of the strategic adjustments that we made for this current school year. So what I'd want to share a little more in particular is under tier one instruction, being able to look a little more closely at what we're doing around that first core instruction, and then being able to look at the results of that going into our 22 star results. And so we were able to make some adjustments there, implementing tier one training, implementing supports specifically to math instruction across those campuses where we're seeing gaps in math in our elementary, middle and high schools. So we were able to also implement for tier two and tier three support, some additional professional development that was also embedded during intercession, and then moving that into piloting a reading and math diagnostic, so we can start to support progress or track progress and then have more identified support aligned to those progress monitoring diagnostics.
Now, as we mentioned, that we needed to have a third grade goal in literacy, a third grade in math. We also needed to focus on college career and military readiness. So the goal here was, again, to cover all aspects of C C M R. You can see this is even despite the pandemic, we've been really able to make the gains and the progress that we had hoped even back in 2020. Again, 2019 is our baseline year, and what's to be noted on this particular outcome is that it is always a lagging indicator. So right now, the, the, it says like, for example, the data on the class of 2022 is actually the class of 2021. So this is what makes this a very challenging indicator because we're always sort of the year behind, and you'll see this encompasses a number of areas. What we're doing right now for the class of 2023 will actually be part of 2024 accountability. These are the groups, our special ed and our emergent bilinguals, and how they have been able to progress, progress, and even above and beyond what we had set. This actually is a, is an outcome that we're very, very proud of. You can see why. It is one that we not only tend to lead, not only our area, but also the state in. There's a lot of good work being done in this area, but there's also a lot of work to do. And that's exactly where our new outcomes and what we're hoping to do with what we're bringing you tonight as we move forward past the current years. This actually breaks down, C C M R is a very detailed, it goes into a lot of different areas. You have the total C C M R. Basically, what it's doing is measuring students readiness for college career military after they graduate. You have a variety of ways that students can earn indicators from T S I criteria, the T S I A, which is the college entrance exam, A P, I Bs, dual credit, on ramps, our industry-based certifications, level one and two certifications, and C T E courses, associate degrees, and then our I E P and workforce, and our advanced diploma for special education students. You can definitely see just from the chart, E P I C being blue, state being gold or orange, that there are certain areas that we have done tremendous work, and then others, obviously, that we need to pay a great deal more attention to. These are the breakdowns, if you're interested in your individual high schools and extended groups of students. Our progress measures for C C M R originally, based back in 2020, were the T S I criteria. You can see that we have done a very good job of even quite often the first couple of years going up and beyond, or at least meeting our goals. Again, the gray is we just don't have the data yet, but also just always keeping in mind it is a lagging indicator. T S I in relation to the state and the region, again, in blue, again, an area of pride for us and something we want to continue to improve upon and always do better. This is an area of definite focus and need and a lot of work being done in C T E. This is our industry-based certifications, and we definitely have lagged below even our own goals, and you can see in the next slide, oops, I guess we can't see in the next slide, just where we were in terms of the state and the region, definitely lagging behind there as well. This is what we're doing to help improve those areas.
So on both of these, similarly, you'll see in the chart, some of the areas where we started to identify where we were in 21, 22, in terms of those inputs, and then looking at where we are in terms of our output data. So there have been some increases, some particular things that were attended to as it related to I B C exams, support around that college and career readiness, and then other supports as well. So in those strategic adjustments, what you can see there is some additions to our P Tex. In, in addition to that, there were some T S I assessment pieces that we started to put in place where there was the calendar, some curriculum development pieces around the assessment, so that we had a tighter focus around that, but then adding some additional opportunities for college credit. The other piece that you'll see there is we started to, and are continuing to look at our C T E programs of study, and that's a, a large piece that we're doing now is assessing and evaluating where we are, and then being able to also go back and look at our college prep enrollment monitoring, but with a more of an emphasis around T S I criteria and being able to track that by campus. So here's where we are now, looking at this year's, this is our kind of suggested recommendations for H B three student outcome goals. So if you look at the column of years, the ones in black are noted, and those, those were the original goals from when this, this set of five was, was first identified. And so in blue, you'll see for 2022, that's kind of the baseline of where we are. And so what we used is a way to kind of recalibrate where we are with our goals in terms of these particular student outcome goals, and then setting the next two years, 23 and 24, and creating in red are the new goals that we are proposing. And then knowing that 24, 25 is going to be the first year of the next cycle of a five-year plan, we have that also there as a starting point, knowing also that we anticipate their changes with accountability that, that may also offset some of our goals. But what we also did is go back to not only the yearly target and made the adjustments, but went back to the student groups and also made the adjustments there that would then align to the growth that we are now looking at and in terms of our yearly targets. So as you can tell up at the front, it would be the primary goal, student outcome goal would be star reading, and then the increase there from the baseline being 2022. So when we look at what we're measuring, what we started to do is to make some adjustments in what we're measuring to monitor our progress toward that particular goal. So what we wanted to do is to go back to our early childhood and look at pre-K readiness, and so what are our pre-K students scoring, or the number of, or percentage of students that are scoring on track on our current literacy screener? And so we would have a, a growth from 67% to 69% by 2025. The other piece of it would be looking at a second measure, which is to also look at our currently literacy screener for kindergarten. So now we would also add that as a part of our measure. And then for first through third grade, we would look at a R I T score, which is a R O S unit, and it's a scale that gives you student growth measure that we can start to look at the number or percentage of students who are above 90% on that scale, which would give us an indicator of where they are at the different level, whether it's first grade, second grade, or third grade. And so that would be how we're measuring those three grade levels.
So basically, what you see is just a greater level of specificity in terms of what we're monitoring to really meet the overarching student outcome goal associated with early literacy, correct?
Correct. So you'll see that mirrored in, when we look at math. So similarly, that black, what's in the percentages for black is where we started off. We've made some slight adjustments there based on the baseline being at 2022, and that's what's shown for you in blue. And then the red percentages are where we're projecting from there, going all the way to 2025. So we would have an increase from now 42, being the baseline, to 61, and then doing the same in terms of making those adjustments across our sub, subgroup, student subgroups, so that we can meet that target. So similarly, we did the same to kind of match that, starting with pre-kindergarten, looking at the number of students who are on track by the end of the school year on our math screener. And so that would give us a progression, starting from where we are now, or where we were last year, and then moving towards 86% by June 25. For the early childhood math progress measure, this would be something that we would start in the new school year, because currently we're not looking at kindergarten readiness in math, and so we would transition to being able to look at our, a current screener and looking at that through the lens of STEM. So it includes math and science in that. So our goal from there would be to increase by 10% from the baseline, which would be set in the 2023 school year. The next piece of that would be also doing similar for literacy as we are in math, as we are for literacy, and that would be to look at that R I T score, to look at the measure and the scale of where students are, are showing growth in first, second and third. And so these would be our measures that we would look at for, for early literacy, math and, or early childhood literacy and math, so that we would be able to determine, are we making progress towards that student outcome goal?
I wanted to also reinforce on this slide that when you look at the kindergarten and the first through third grade, you see baseline and you see, you don't see any projected percentages. And I, I just want to reiterate what Dr. Kennedy said. We have not been diagnostically assessing our students in these areas for math, and so that's why we don't currently have data. So we have to start with baseline, so when we get the baseline at the end of this school year, or we can start looking at M O Y and then B O Y, so that we can project outward from there.
So I wanted to share, or we're going to share a little bit around the C C M R student outcome goal and those progress.
One thing I want to also mention is you can see our graphs got really, really wide and really, really tiny. It's because progress measures are going to be tracking all of our ethnicities, economic disadvantage, emergent bilinguals, and our special education students. So again, it's really, we are monitoring and tracking all of our groups. In C C M R, again, we've made some adjustments. Our goal for 2025 is that all of our students graduate with an indicator at 91%, and we would love to be able to even exceed that. But again, this is an area that we have had some, a great deal of, of success, but again, areas that we can definitely strengthen, even those that we've been relatively strong. Our best baseline, again, as, as mentioned with our early childhood, will be 2022. And so you can see in the graph that we've made adjustments as necessary in order to ensure that we are on track for those progress measures in 2023, 2024, and again, in 2025, extending out from the original year. What's really important in our C C M R is the progress measures have greatly increased and really have raised the bar for our campuses and for monitoring our students. For example, 3.1, we're going to be looking at what our students are, and that is so tiny, I'm so sorry, is we're looking at T S I criteria, but what we're taking out of that equation is the college prep course, although that will still be afforded to our students who are seniors. We really want to focus our efforts on how our students are doing in T S I A, S A T, A C T, and very importantly, their actual enrollment to college, whether that's a two or four-year university. So it's a combined measure, just those college entrances, and then also how, how we're doing in actually getting them enrolled, and that also helps. UTEP, E P C C, and a lot of our partners, is that is one of their major goals as well. The next progress measure that we'll be monitoring again is our industry certification. In order to really ensure that we can increase and meet our, our goals here, we really need to align our programs of study. Too many of our I B Cs have been sort of individualized, they, they're in, they're out on their own, not really aligned to what our high schools and C C T E are providing in terms of program of study. Our department is currently looking very closely at all of our programs. What can we sustain? What has the student interest, the teachers that we need to be able to lead those? And then just making sure that we're maintaining those alignments, and that once a student starts in a program of study, we do everything to support them in, in working all the way through and ending that with an I B C. Also, the progress measure 3.3, we want all of our students, you don't want this to be something that's only reserved for upperclassmen, that we do have now programs in place to ensure that we have opportunities for students as early as ninth grade, all the way through senior year, to earn their indicator, and that we want to increase that from the baseline 10% every year. Progress 3.4 is increasing our average S A T scores. As you know, we offer S A T to all of our students, their junior year and again, senior year. We also have invested as a district for many years in P S A T for our sophomores and juniors. So this is really important that we pay more attention to how our students are doing and provide more support prior to those tests. The scores that you see there is a four-year average, that's how we've arrived at what our 2025 ultimate goal of 989 would be for our students. And then the final two progress measures, 3.5, 3.6, very similar. We want to make sure that our college career military readiness is not just something that's tasked to our high schools. We want to see that our students, when they're leaving eighth grade, that they're at the grade level necessary for them to take advantage of these C C M R opportunities. And so those are both for math and for literacy, again, that we do the diagnostics to ensure that they are at the level necessary to give them the skills to be successful when they enter their freshman year. We'd also like to see a lot more students taking advanced classes in middle school, but that didn't make our progress measure, but maybe you can suggest it. No, I don't, no, please suggest it. But these are just some of the measures that we'd like to add. The more we monitor, the more it will ensure that we're going to reach these goals and that we're going to hit that 91% of our students graduating with college career military readiness. We want to thank Ms. Anani and Ms. Hernandez for both being on this ad hoc committee. The best part, not only that we've revamped, that we have some new goals to look at, but we also have a calendar to keep you apprised of how we're doing throughout the year. So we're going to close with sharing what our calendar, our monitoring, not only for the board, but also for our stakeholders, our teachers, our administrators, so that they can also be tracking this on their campuses.
So this just shows along the school year where we would have different opportunities to share progress using those diagnostics, diagnostics and screeners, but also to look at our star data, but also to look at the progress measures, especially for those C C M R pieces. So starting off in, in the fall, and then we'll have different opportunities throughout where we'll be able to look at those particular H B three. Where we'll be able to look at those particular um HB three student outcome goals and progress measures that we just shared. But also to look at other areas where we will be able to track and to monitor progress towards those particular goals. But also to have better conversations and deeper conversations around data in general.
If I may just kind of share the sentiments of the ad hoc committee and some of the conversations and the justification of why we went this direction. Um first of all, thank you for for meetings with this, those intensive two sessions. I think we're off to a really good start. Um I did want to share with the rest of the board our thought process in having an outcome goal that was aligned to HB HB three. But then having our interim goals um provide some greater alignment and us and some act, some norm, nationally norm referenced assessments. So that um and you didn't see here because that's kind of just open for administration, but the NWEA MAPS uh assessment is what is is starting to be used in the district. And we felt that that national norm reference test could be a criteria and that would give us a varied dataset that could help us chart the um course for the year for our teachers and and really just some alignment with the interim assessments um that would be standardized across the district. So you'll see a lot of that in our early um childhood literacy and then our early math. Um and then on the on the CCMR side, I first I have, I do have some questions, but first I'd like to share also, we did um include some nationally norm reference assessments too. That's why you saw sort of the focused on the SAT, the SAT test. Um and then also the uh use utilizing the NWEA MAPS for eighth grade um as well for math and for for reading and and writing. So that was sort of the same concept. The question I have for you all is the CCMR student outcome goal doesn't appear to be reflective of what um we discussed at the last. The last meeting in regards to removing the college prep course from the outcome.
So for the, are you?
The new CCM, the new CCMR student outcome goal? The actual goal, the actual outcome goal.
Actually, in the report um that was provided, it is in there. Um because we were very clear on that when we were going through and reviewing. It was detailed there.
Okay.
The report that it would be removed, that all we would be looking at would be TSIA, the SAT, ACT, and then college enroll, um college enrollment.
For the actual CCMR student outcome goal?
Yes, that we were removing the college prep.
Okay.
That's not something we'd be measuring.
Okay.
So when we say seventy eight to ninety one, that's not inclusive of anything associated with college prep. It it's only inclusive of the measures that they indicated, which is.
Well, I guess I don't know that this baseline is reflective of that, though. This baseline probably different than than that.
Well, and it may also be impacted by the fact that it's a lagging indicator. All of these are lagging indicators, so we'd have to probably go back and pull out and recalculate based on the class of twenty two.
Okay.
For this coming year. And then what, twenty one, um how many took the, earned it through the college prep class? Because we would have to make those adjustments here.
So I would recommend doing that, so when we bring it to the board for um final approval, that we see that pulled out and they can actually see what those percentages are gonna look like going forward without that piece in there.
And I guess it's so that I don't dig too deep today, could I, could we get one more small ad hoc committee meeting just to sort of wrap, tie up the CCMR um goals for that kind of thing, just kind of flesh through it? Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, discussions?
I have a question.
Ms. Hernandez?
Dr. Gonzalez, you you referenced um the testing for eighth graders. Did you say that? I remember talking about it, but I wasn't sure.
I think what we're planning to do is the NWEA, the MAPS program, we have that at the middle school, we also have it at high school. So we'll be able to use that assessment, the same one that we're using for our our early um literacy and early math. Here's, it's the same type of diagnostic only for the eighth grader. So again, it's gonna give us the scale, if the students are within that range, it'd be considered at grade level in literacy and grade level at at math. So we'll be doing that whether they're taking an advanced class or not. All of our eighth graders will um be able to to give the information through the diagnostic for us.
So we we have a student outcome goal then for them too, for the eighth grade?
I think it's listed on the calendar, right, as a report out, or is it?
And it's three point five and three point six. We don't have a baseline yet because our first year to do this outside of a pilot will be next year.
Okay.
So we did, we got them in.
And that would be a BOY, an MOY, and an ELY diagnostic through MAPS, correct?
The first time it's administered is more like a screener. And then um by the time you get to the MOY, you can look at it as a progress measure, and then it ends at the end.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Osaveta. So looking through these, I I'm wondering if it could be a little bit more specific in terms of when this will start. Um like, I don't know, like you have something that says it's will increase from fifty two percent, twenty two baseline. But I know that a lot of the data comes in at the beginning of the year, of the school year. Um so it just in how you're writing the goal. Um if it's February twenty three, um say that, so it's as specific as possible. Um through June twenty twenty five or something like that. That that's just feedback on improving the goals to be as specific as possible. Um the other thing that I feel.
Dr. Osaveta, you're talking about the overarching goal, right?
Yeah, the overarching goal on.
For each section?
For each section, just so it's very, very specific. Um I'm just going through all of these.
Not necessarily the progress measures, because I know that we're gonna be reporting.
But even the, even the progress measure should be pretty specific on on that. Um the percentage of all pre kindergarten students that score on track in the current literacy screener in English and Spanish will increase from sixty seven to sixty nine by June twenty five.
Okay.
Um I I I think you you have to say from sixty seven and now February twenty three or May twenty twenty three.
Yeah.
That way, it's it's an accountability measure on the district, right, to make sure that you are going for it. And everybody's clear on where it is, whether it's gonna be an interim goal, like um Tracy Hanani said, or if it's an overarching goal. They all have to be very specific in that sense.
Okay.
To note the start.
Yeah, the start and the end date, the start of where, what percentage you're at, the end percentage that you want to achieve. So just wanted to throw that out for overall, all of this. Um I'm wondering, um again, the question, I know it's been a little weird for the past few years. Is it CCMR still, is it CCR, are we excluding the military part, like?
They brought the military back in, but I think um it's really not ready for us to to be able to go any deeper than the fact that they brought it back. Um one of the reasons they had taken it away was just hard to substantiate that the information was accurate. So I guess as we move forward, um and also, we don't know if the this current legislative session will give us some more guidance on moving forward with House Bill Three. And if this is something that will extend beyond twenty twenty five, um then quite certainly, it could be something that we can focus on a little bit with more detail. Because it is, you're right, it's not mentioned anywhere other than in the acronym.
Okay, and then on, um I I I just, if we could get something a little bit more specific in terms of what um career readiness is and is, um I think that would be really good. Because every time I think about that, I think about just little courses that can check a box rather than something that's gonna be instructive for kids. So um I I just wanted to be more intentional. And if there's a paragraph on these are the options that we're offering, this is how we're screening. And I don't know if it's in the summary, I I went through the summary, but I didn't see like a whole thing on there.
So really quick, just that was kind of the the surface level conversation that we were having, because CCMR, um and probably Dr. Osaveta is right, we probably should be very, very specific when we talked about the things that we talked about in in the ad hoc committee in terms of what we're measuring. Um it does, this, the verbiage as presented does include the college prep course, which is listed as as TSI, um a TSI measure. But what we're trying to get away from is the college prep as a TSI measure, because that's actually the last resort for students who don't pass any of the other things. And it's also really not a student outcome, because it's it's a grade that's given by the teacher, right? It's not a norm reference measure of what a student know knows or is able to do. And so we're trying to get away from including that, and that was the reason that I requested the the second meeting, so that we could have a little bit more specificity. And um ha- measure things that are norm referenced.
So one of the things that we included to to address that was in that first measure, three point one, is that's why we focus more on um the outcome bonus. Um and part of that is because when you calculate the outcome bonus, it's the TSI um criteria minus the preparation. Um so it takes it out of, and so that allows us to have a little bit more of what you're looking for in terms of all of the other TSI measures, plus enrollment in post secondary. So when you look at the um outcome bonus, if we track that, it that that sets the criteria where it's minus um the test preparation, because it's not applicable to the outcome bonus. So it was one way that we could look at it, um where we're looking at something in particular that takes that out and leaves everything else.
I I think what I heard, uh and yes, and what I heard Dr. Osaveta say is that, you know, as we bring this back in March, um that we define, uh because I think it's much more clear what the college readiness measures might be. I think more clearly, what are uh indicators that we're looking at that really show career readiness as well? Did I hear you correctly, Dr. Osaveta? Okay.
Yeah, that would be three point two. And I think it's mentioned that it reads increase the percentage of students successfully completing an industry certification in an aligned program of study. And I think us being able to present exactly what are, what's a program of study, where are they found, which high schools offer which program of study, what four year um pathway is that, and what industry prep based certification um is sort of that final um step for them. I think that will help sort of define what we're offering in terms of career readiness. Um not that those students aren't also college ready, but we know some, you know, their paths are, take them different places after graduation. So those aligned programs of study, I think, will help shed quite a bit of light on on what we're doing to offer that for our students.
And and what are you doing with graduation rate in terms of how this affects it? I I I know that um you can look at graduation rates and how they increase or where they're at, what percentage. But more than anything, that the outcome might be more what happens after that. And and thinking of where where the kids are going. Um I I get that, that's the CCMR aspect, but more, I guess more of a qualitative approach to it. Because I I feel that a graduation rate is more of an output, it's not necessarily an outcome. And so if we're looking at it more in depth on that, we could have that warmer handoff into higher ed or career or the military or something like that. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And and the last thing that I had was um I don't see anything here for English learners. And um I know there was emergent bilinguals in here um with the different groups that are are split up, like for example, in literacy. Uh but I I think we really need to focus on English learners as well. So I would really want to see what you're doing to affect that specific population of students.
Correct, and that's, as I mentioned, on the 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 overarching student outcome goal. The the state does require that we're monitoring and providing differentiation and and very focused um attention to both our EB's, our emergent bilinguals, and our special education students. In addition to also tracking just ethnicity, economic disadvantage, that all of those have to be part of our progress money. When we're we're monitoring, we're breaking down to all the groups so we can see, and we have goals for all of them um in order to meet the overall goal, um so that we're not leaving anybody behind.
Yeah, yeah, so I get that the state requires it, but I um it doesn't mean that we can add more to it.
Oh, absolutely.
And 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 that's where I think English learner has to be um intentional, very specific as part of this. Um are you grouping them under special ed or?
No.
Emergent bilinguals, would that cover it?
No, they're they're listed under emergent bilingual, and then special education is separate.
Okay.
And I um I'm gonna definitely write that down for um the next ad hoc committee meeting in terms of maybe even looking at specificity for that sub pop. Um that's a conversation we could.
As an additional measure?
Maybe.
Yeah, are you looking at wha- more ESL, your English as a second language versus your emergent bilinguals that are in the bilingual program? Is that what you're trying to 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 see more of a differentiation?
I guess, yeah, I I I mean, we we've gone from English language learners, English learners, I'm trying to use the correct terminology.
Well, emergent bilinguals is a new term that TEA is using at this point, yeah.
Yeah, but I I think just being more specific, if you look at the percentages in that chart right there, I mean, it's it's just really, it's not even at fifty percent. And so if there's intentionality of going after that specific population, I think it's something that we need to be more aggressive toward.
So beyond the eighty percent by twenty twenty five?
Yeah, I would, yeah.
Good feedback.
Is there anything from anybody else? Okay, all right, well, thank you so much. Thank you, board members, uh Hanani and Hernandez for being a part of this committee. Uh this is very informative. Uh there is no action on this item, so we will now move to item eight, action item. Eight A, discuss and take appropriate action on the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, and twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five academic school calendar corrections and additions. Ms. Osaveta?
Yes, um Board President Velarde and trustees, we're bringing this back to you. Um last board meeting, you all adopted our school calendars for the next two school years. Um after that, we noted um some discrepancies in the calendar. So we're bringing those back to you for consideration, one of which was um the calendar noted the wrong um week for Thanksgiving. And so there were other, uh some other adjustments that were made based on some errors um in dates. So um we've got our staff here to share with you um what those considerations are so that we, you all can consider taking action for that uh on that this evening to make those corrections.
Good evening, Board President Velarde, board members, Ms. Osaveta. My name is Glenn Nathan, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, and we're here to share with you some information related to the calendars. After having adopted the twenty three, twenty four, and twenty four, twenty five academic calendars, El Paso ISD was alerted of an error on the twenty four, twenty five school calendar. Uh the calendars were reviewed for any additional possible corrections that might be necessary, and the following corrections were noted. Uh identifying November tenth, twenty twenty three as Veterans Day holiday on the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four calendar. The previously adopted calendar only said Veterans Day, so we want to correct it to Veterans Day holiday for November tenth, two thousand twenty three. The second correction is to identify the Thanksgiving break holiday from November twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four through November twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four. The originally adopted calendar identifies the Thanksgiving break as the prior week, November eighteen through the twenty second, that's incorrect. The correct week is November twenty fifth through the twenty ninth of two thousand twenty four. And then the third correction is to identify the winter holiday break from December twenty third, two thousand twenty four through January third, two thousand twenty five. The originally adopted calendar said December twenty third through January second. It had the correct dates highlighted, but it did not explicitly say January third, it only said January second. Additionally, um the inclusion of the elementary school, middle school, PK eight, and high school bell schedules for regular and early release times was placed on both the twenty three, twenty four, and twenty four, twenty five academic school calendars. And finally, operational minutes were recalculated for high schools due to the change in the high school bell schedule. Uh high schools will now have eighty one thousand forty operational minutes, resulting in twelve inclement weather days. Trans Mountain Early College High School uh does have a different bell schedule that must be aligned to El Paso Community College as part of its dual credit agreements. With that separate um bell schedule, they will have eighty one thousand six hundred and sixty operational minutes, resulting in thirteen inclement weather days. Those were the changes that um that we wanted to add to the calendars as well as the corrections that we noted after going through them uh thoroughly. And so we hope that you will be able to approve those changes and corrections to the calendars. Any questions?
Are there any questions by any board members? Do we have a motion?
I move that the board approve the corrections and additions to the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, and twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school calendars as presented. 2025 school calendars as presented.
A motion by Mr. Urboli, second by Ms. Hanani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. Thank you. This time, we're going to go to item number eight, action items. Before I entertain a motion, are there any items on the consent agenda that any board member wishes to remove?
You're on nine.
Item number nine?
Nine, consent agenda, not action.
Sorry, my bad, my bad, item nine. What number, please?
I.
Nine, I. Are there any items to be removed? Any other items?
I have two. Nine L6 and nine M1.
Nine L6, nine M1. Okay, are there any other items to be removed? Okay, there's... Item 9G, okay. Okay. And then before we take a motion, just be advised that item 9B1 on the agenda, consent agenda, has been removed from consideration at this time. So at this time, I'll go ahead and consider a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Absent, let me go back, 9I. I got 9I. Nine L6. Nine M1.
Move to approve.
A motion by Mr. Urboli. Do you have a second?
Aye, second.
Motion by Ms. Hernandez, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Consent agenda passes 6-0. We will now go to item 9I, approval of revisions to 2022, 23, extra performance, and instructional stipends listings. Okay, so Ms. Hanani, you requested this, or are there any questions you have of Ms. Cortez or Ms.?
Just a really brief question, if the standards for what constitutes low performing and high performing have been established already? I just didn't see it in the backup.
A low-performing school will be considered one that we have put in our tier three category. Those schools are either unrated by TEA, meaning they have a D or an F as an overall accountability, or anyone who has a D or an F in domain one, which is student growth, sort of the key, tier one instruction on the campus. So currently, we have approximately 18 campuses that fall into those categories, and so again, it's a tier three campus, it's, they have a D or an F in domain one, or they are unrated based on overall accountability.
And then it says high performing, do you, do you have, is it a certain criteria for who would be considered for the stipend, or it's any principal that is now in that category, or that is hired by?
I think what we're looking at in high performing is someone who's a proven leader, who's been on a campus, who has shown success, not only just the accountability rating, but things like attendance, low retention rates, you know, the culture and climate surveys on their campuses, someone who's just proven themselves to be successful, both as an instructional leader academically, but also just in their outreach to their community, and how they've been able to move their school or maintain high performing. Sometimes it's just as difficult to get a school to the top and keep them there as it is to make that climb.
Any other questions? Okay, so do I have a motion for the approval of item 9I? I have a motion by Ms. Hanani. Do you have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Urboli. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries 6-0. We will now then go to item 9L6, approval of expenditures for goods and services from vendors that have exceeded the 100,000 procurement threshold, budgeted federal, state, local, bond, and grant funds not to exceed $1,430,000. So Mr., or Dr. Osavera, you asked for this one to be moved? Do you have any questions?
Yeah, so this one, we talked about it last month, and so I kind of wanted to get an update more, more than what's provided on the sheet. I guess there are new charges, that's, because last time it was like 2.8, this is like 1.4, right? And then the GARCOM situation was figured out. And so I just kind of wanted you to speak to that, because you said you have $100,000 left from the December approval, and then this 1.4 is just a bunch of other stuff as well, right? Okay.
So as was explained on the executive summary, I believe, or on the board report, I did add some verbiage, those were individual projects at two campuses. Those two campuses, I'm not going to be able to recall right off the top of my head, I apologize, but they were for replacement security cameras. And so those expenditures were outside of the realm of those funds approved for bond campuses.
And so we, and we have everything figured out from the 800,000, from that whole thing, like, that, if you can explain the process to figure that out, I'm just trying to have that understanding as well.
Yes, so one of the largest missing pieces was that at the time that requisitions were being entered, there was no reference of the board approval being listed on there. So as a department, we were unable to accurately track those. So we've gone back, we've worked with department staff and technology, so that they're able to now put that in on any requisitions moving forward. We have gone back and worked with them collaboratively to make sure that everything that has been processed already is fully being reported, and that's how I was able to report that that 99,000 and change remains.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody else has questions.
Any other questions? Mr. Urboli?
Yeah, Ms. Ayvedra, I just look forward to when that policy is coming back, so that our schools can make these acquisitions as necessary, instead of waiting on our monthly board meeting where we may or may not approve, so any, any speed behind that would be much appreciated.
Noted, thank you so much.
Okay, so there being no other additional questions or comments, do I have a motion for item 9L6?
Move to approve.
Mr. Urboli moves to approve. Do we have a second?
Aye, second.
Ms. Hernandez is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. We will now go to item 9M1. Award of Crockett Elementary School Reroofing Project Number 23.528B to the Roof and Metal Company utilizing Region 19 Allied States Cooperative, RFP Number 21-7411, job order contracting and facilities construction services, 1990X operating fund, $801,697.26. Mr., or Dr. Osavera, you asked for this to be pulled. Do you have questions?
Yeah, so with the history of, and I know you might have not been here, I know you weren't here, but this, the bond project at Crockett was riddled with change orders, over 30 change orders, and then even the closeout was not done in the best way. So after all that money spent with bond money, I was wondering what happened here, and why this $800,000 was needed for the roof? Is this something that was an accident, or, and we had to repair it, or is it bond money? What, what's going on?
Good evening, President Velarde, Superintendent Ayvedra, members of the board. Yes, sir, this project, which includes a library area and the classroom wing 400, 600, they were not part of the bond project.
But, so, did the roof, like, what, why did we have to do this?
Excuse me, Irene Ramirez, Facilities and Construction. The bond project focused primarily on the historic building, and that is the work that was funded with that 2016 bond program. These two wings of classrooms and the library were not included in the scope of work of that project, and so we always knew that there were other components of the school that we would have to come back and do.
So are there other components that are still missing after this, that you're going to go back and do?
As of this point, we don't have any others that have arisen, so we believe that this will take care of the major projects that were still outstanding.
And we couldn't include this as part of the bond, even though we knew about it at the time, and there was a ton of change orders that maybe another change order could have been brought to do this?
We tried to stick to on the roofing part, because roofing, it's difficult to say how expensive it will be, but it can, at times turn out to be expensive. We just didn't want to add to it, and at the time, the roofs weren't in as bad a shape as they are after another two years.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions? Dr. Osavera, just, just so that you know, I mean, I think, you know, going back to when the bond was, was proposed, and when everything was being laid out, it was understood that, that really most of those projects were not going to have complete remod, and that, that there was going to be things coming up later. It was prioritized through committee and through, through just looking into what the primary needs at the time were for those schools. I do believe that the day is going to come, once everything is finally closed out, there'll be some monies left over that weren't spent, and at that time, I think this board will have an opportunity to be able to prioritize where they feel that those dollars may need to go. Just as a conversation. Okay, at that point, do I have a motion to approve item 9I? Ms. Hanani, was that you to motion approve?
Second.
Do a second, Mr. Urboli. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. And then that will now take us to item number 10. Ms. Ayvedra, these are the items for the next month's agenda.
Right, so as we look ahead to March, the board can expect, obviously, that we're going to be bringing the annual enrollment review back, along with FC Local. We will have an ESER update, and the board will also possibly be considering approval of tuition rates. As we look ahead to April, we've got, you know, some fiscal reports and facilities and construction quarterly reports. We'll also have an update from the Shack, and we'll be considering recommendations on our human sexuality instruction as, according to EHAA, legal and local.
Thank you. Any questions? That then takes us to item 11. It is now 6:37 PM, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.